We'll call the regular schedule, uh, well, not regular schedule, a special schedule, uh, council, October council meeting in order. Thank you everybody for coming, uh, thank you one that's tuned in online. Um, we'll open up with our prayer and followed by pleasure. Mr. Crawford will lead us.
Father God, we thank you for today and thank you for all the blessings that you've given each and every one of us. Father, we thank you for this great country, state, county, and city that we live in, Father. And we thank you for the people that provide the safety for us, Father, from local to, to national, Father. Father, we just ask you to be with us as we conduct the city of Bolivar business, Father, that we would, uh, keep, uh, you in mind and you would lead us and direct us, Father. Father, we just ask you to forgive us our sins, in your name I pray, amen.
Place to play. United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the role, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Mr. Golden.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Mr. Lau. Mr. McKinney.
Here.
Ms. Ray, here. Ms. Spinks, here. Mr. Woods.
Uh, thank you, um, Mr. Lauda called, you know, we rescheduled me because of holiday next week, but he's with the, that's the middle school basketball team. I didn't know he was announcing, so he's announced at the middle school basketball team game tonight. So, uh, moving on to approval of the minutes, we have the regular scheduled council minute, meeting, minutes. Uh, is there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Is there a motion we approve those minutes?
So move.
Motion by, motion by Ms., motion by Mr. Hill, seconded by Ms. Spinks, if you would cash your votes. Motion carried. Uh, under my report, we let everyone know we'll be closed on Monday in observance of Columbus Day. Also remind everyone of the Bolivar blowout, barbecue blowout, uh, October twenty first through twenty second. I want to personally invite you to come out and attend the whole weekend, but, uh, really want to be looking for you at twelve o'clock that Friday. We're having mayor's luncheon and Cliff is going barbecue. You're gonna have barbecue, uh, ribs, chicken. We're gonna have a nice little lunch there at twelve o'clock, uh, on that Friday, so. Y'all come out. We've invited mayors and other elected officials from across the West Tennessee, so, um, y'all come have some fun with us and then that weekend, all that weekend and. Ms. Ray, can you tell us, sort of give us that little report you gave at Devco about the teams and all that stuff that we got coming?
Yeah, we're expecting about twenty five teams to show up this year. We had eighteen last year. We've, uh, opened our prize money, so Bolivar has the largest prize money on the MBN circuit this year. That's, uh, gonna bring a lot of the heavy hitters in to play for that weekend, so, um, we're, we're looking for about twenty five pro teams and about ten backyard teams, so.
All right, looking forward to that and also just make them know that I am a certified judge, uh, on the MBN network, so. Y'all, I think y'all can cook, call me.
You're gonna pace yourself.
Yeah. All right, uh, that's all under my report. Moving on to the standing committee reports. On the electric, uh, board, the Voluntary Authority Board met September twenty sixth for their regular monthly meeting. Approved the hiring of right-of-way contract crew to help with right-of-way clearing, hired service electric to do the substation testing at Hebron for twenty four thousand seven sixty. And also, as y'all can see, the broadband is still being pulled across the city and county and so. Go sign up when it's available to you. Uh, utilities, Mr. Cliff Henson.
Mayor, council.
How you doing?
How you doing?
Uh, kind of short this week. We're having our utility board meeting on Wednesday, so didn't have a meeting before this one to do any business, but real quickly here, pilot light season starts October the fourteenth. Just want to let all the customers know that this is our busiest time of the year, uh, be patient. Uh, give us three days notice if it's possible, um, and we'll get to you as soon as we can. But this will go through November the thirtieth. Um, gas prices just came in about an hour ago. We are down this month. Uh, we went from one oh two, went from one twenty nine to one oh two this month, so that is a little positive note there. So hopefully that'll last throughout the winter. I don't know. See, that was my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cliff. Have we set the date for the fish fry?
Yes, it's gonna be November the third, I believe that's right.
You hear that, Larry?
Yes, fish, fish fry. Where it's gonna be at, ready to sit at all.
At City Hall.
Where it uses to be.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna sit while I use the seat.
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, okay, thank you.
All right, next the, uh, fire chief, Frank.
Good morning, mayor, councilman.
How you doing?
Attorney, how are you? Good, okay. My report, uh, fire call, we had twenty five fire calls, had eighteen in the city, seven in the county, but as you can see, fire call, we only had two structured fires in the county. We had no structured fire in the city. That's why that mean a loss to us. That mean our fire prevention is working, uh, most of them alarm calls and V, uh, MBA, motor vehicle accidents. Um, training, we had two hundred eighty one hours training, smoke alarm installed with three, fire code inspection seventeen, public relation event, we had four. And I know most of you guys got just second page of report. I definitely just wanted to say that, uh, City of Bolivar Fire Department was awarded, uh, a little bit over eighty three thousand dollars, uh, for AFG grant, its assistance to firefighter grant. We put it in in, in twenty twenty one, we finally, God knows that we did get the grant. Um, also, this past cup, this past, this month, uh, the state fire marshal, uh, they had out of seventy five fire department that really truly hit it hard putting up smoke alarm. They reward, they, I mean, they rewarded seventy five fire department that were putting up, really pushing smoke alarm hard. City of Bolivar finished tenth, and I mean, we talking about not small department, we were competing against Memphis, Jackson, big county department like Henderson and Hardin County. So that's, to me, that's been a lot to my guys, Ms. Sarah. That's really something to be proud of and I, and I am proud of it, you know, because them guys really get out and work, make sure the family, the, uh, the people in Hardin County is safe with putting smoke alarm. We still a little bit over fifty percent, um, making sure everybody got one in their home. We was out, but now we finally got ordered a smoke alarm. I mean, I think maybe a little bit over a hundred we got in, but we're gonna start back to putting smoke alarm up. Um, fire prevention, it's August the fifteenth. We're gonna be out at Walmart. We hadn't had this in two years because COVID kind of stopped. We're gonna put it, we're gonna do it again coming, uh, August seventeenth from, uh, ten to two, that's on a Saturday. And so if any of you.
I told.
I told, I'm sorry, but any of you, but any of you, but any of you guys want to come by this week? We do, we all got the schools, uh, preschool, kindergarten, first grade coming by the station, so if any of you guys want to come by, see the kids, come help us out. We definitely appreciate it. This is my report.
Thank you, Chief Clark.
Also appreciate seeing you again, Chief.
Yeah, you're calling second.
I did.
Next, uh, Pauline, Steve John.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My report is as follows. Total cost of service gonna be six hundred and seventy eight. We issued a hundred and twenty six citations. We've had thirty accidents, two were injuries, rest were property damage. Had forty five arrests, nine were juvenile, thirty six were adults. Special events, we did nine DUI saturations, nine eleven, remember it's day, the under guard did, I think, two different events that day. One with fire department, one to courthouse. And we also had to do the Bolivar homecoming with the security and also the motorcade for the homecoming. And we had two hundred and sixty four point five hours of training for the month. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next, Parsons, Rick, Mr. Ford.
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Parks and Rec's department reports on the following. Uh, the youth soccer league is going and going well. We were able to replace, uh, about four bulbs on the smaller age group, which is field four out of City Park. We got some of those lights replaced, so it's a little bit brighter out there. And of course, that league will run through October twenty seventh. Line dance class continues for adults on Tuesdays and Thursdays, five P M. here at the gymnasium. Uh, adult volleyball registration has ended and we're attempting to begin those games this month, pending about fourteen. We're trying to get that squared away. Adult basketball registration will begin this month, and we also have an interest survey out within the community about, uh, women's self-defense class, and we want to see who, how much interest, interest we generate before we secure an instructor, so that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you for doing that, Ant.
Appreciate you. You're welcome. Next, House Streets and Salutation, Mr. Lam.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, changed out the pedestrian, the crosswalk lights and the buttons at the, at Jones and Market Street at, uh, this month is bulky item pickup month.
Make sure, no, see if I get this right, no freon, no tires, no construction demolition, so. Um, put your stuff on the side of the road, on the curb and call office up here and the guys come by to get it, get it out. Are we, we taking, taking that stuff to Walnut too, huh?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so it's, give them a little time, cause it take a little time for them to get back and forth, so.
It's about, takes about two hours till everybody go right back.
Yeah. All right.
So what did you, what did you find out about landfill?
They're still waiting on a meeting with the state. They said they're blaming it on the state, I don't know, but, uh, they both be getting a meeting set up where the state could come down.
Okay.
They, they told me they would let me know, so we could be there too and see what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I, we have appointed, uh, so Becky was our library director. She stepped down, uh, Jessica was assistant. Ms. Becky was having a lot of issues with family and health issues and stuff, so I'll get Jessica at the next meeting and honestly, I just haven't had the chance to get with her, but she'll be at the next meeting, but you have her library report there. Um, cops, compliance and zoning, Mr. Watson.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening.
Uh, y'all excuse me. I would take my hat off, but you don't want me to do that, I promise you, so. There's a mess, but, uh, anyway, you have my report. Building consultation, six permits written, zero building inspections, three plumbing inspections, one mechanical, one, and courtesy notice is issued, thirty. And again, like, like Eddie said, it is bulky item month, um, but just remember, no demolition, construction stuff, cause our head folks complaining that we wouldn't get it, so we just don't pick it up. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Um, EMS, we, we got the boss there tonight, cause. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Good evening, mayor, council. Uh, I've got the EMS report for the month of September, um, for the, for Bolivar. We had, uh, two hundred and eighty five total responses. Um, hundred and twenty of those were emergent. Uh, one sixty five were non-emergent, uh, that resulted in a total of two hundred thirty three transports. Uh, transports out of Bolivar General, uh, had sixty four total and fifty seven of them went to, uh, Jackson and then seven of them went to the Memphis area hospitals. Um, the scenes that we made inside the city of Bolivar, two hundred and forty eight, uh, two of them outside of the city limits, uh, in Hardin County, and there were seven outside med center units that came in to provide additional assistance. So that, that concludes my report. Uh, the numbers actually right now look, I mean, we're seeing an increase over the last two or three months of call volume, so it's pretty significant, so we're, we are using some other resources to bring them in to help, help mitigate that in some respects. Um, the only other thing I would add, really, it doesn't pertain to Bolivar itself, but as a med center group, it, it could, uh, we've been privileged enough to be able to provide assets to go on the strike team down to, uh, Fort Myers, Florida to assist with the hurricane effort, so. Uh, we've been able to, um, uh, provide one unit, um, a supervisory asset and then a maintenance, uh, crew to go as well, so. Very proud of that fact and we wanted to let you guys know.
Good evening.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, um, before I do, Main Street Def, uh, Devco, I want y'all, the council, give y'all update on the, uh, annex building where we was remodeling for, uh, EMS. We're still working on that, uh, it's actually coming along good. The training part that we're gonna, conference room that, uh, police and fire wanna share there. Warrior Center is doing a bang-up job. They're doing real good down there, uh, and hopefully the inside of all that will be done here in the next couple of weeks or so. I think biggest thing they got left is the floor, um, epoxy and doing all that, but it's, it's coming along good on that first, first phase there, so. And I've been in discussion with Ms., Ms., uh, Ruby and J R. and all the West Tennessee bunch on status on where we move on the different options we're looking at on housing for the, uh, for med center, but I will say that Ms. Ruby and Sarah, they love them over there at the hospital. I think they provide some extra hands to help them out, so they've been going good. I just wanted to update y'all on that. Uh, on Main Street and Devco, of course, Main Street is putting on the barbecue festival. We just love Devco, uh, meeting, and the next scheduled Devco meeting will be, um, November the fourteenth. We basically had that meeting to do sponsorship for the barbecue festival.
What time?
Five o'clock. All right, that completes the standing committee reports. Moving on to old business discussion on, on neighborhood. As you guys know, remember we talked about, uh, we approved the fixing up the old, um, literacy council and our goal and vision behind it was to get all nonprofits a central location and a hub that they could supply their resources. They can use that building together and make, uh, make a better response to people in the communities that need help. Well, we was trying to hope that we would get enough support and funding that we could maybe put an employee or the nonprofits could go and volunteer their services, where we can house it Monday through Friday and actually have someone there. Well, it was an absolute, I say blessing from God, that I got a call from Mike Smith from the Southwest Human Resource Agency, uh, wanting to be a part of the neighborhood. Um, they did, uh, Mr. Mike, you can come forward. They sent, he did send a letter of, uh, commitment that they are interested in moving the Southwest Human Resource Agency to our neighborhood building. Um, so I said, I think this is a, a huge plus and I'll, so I'll let Mike have the floor, let him tell you about what all they do, the counties they serve and what they're looking to do with our neighborhood building.
Okay, thank you, mayor and board. I appreciate what you do for the city and the community here to make it a better place. I'm Mike Smith. I'm the executive director for Southwest Human Resource Agency. We are a nonprofit that is centrally located in Henderson, Tennessee. Our central office is there. We employ about three hundred and fifty people and operate a forty three million dollar annual operating budget and our one goal is to help people. And so we work with a lot of low-income families and try to provide services and grant dollars to make people in poverty self-sufficient. That's what we do. So we do a lot of different things. Our interest in Bolivar, we have a community service office here that's operated for a long time. We do many of our applications for the local people here in that office. We operate the transportation service out of that office as well. We do some senior service programs out of that office as well. We sign up for commodities, for low-income energy assistance, for weatherization assistance, some other housing programs that we do out of there, take applications as well. I will tell you that this week our commodities will be distributed in Bolivar here on Wednesday and Thursday from eight A M. to twelve P M. Wednesday and Thursday of this week. I think we've got about twelve hundred families that are signed up for that distribution. It will be a, a drive-through where they will drive-through and we will put the food items in their trunk. And so if you want to be a part of that or you want to volunteer to help us, you're welcome to come out. It'll be at the, uh, old boys and girls club. The drive-through will be there. But a little bit more about what we do. We s, we have services in fifteen counties in West Tennessee and like I mentioned, we do the low-income energy assistance program, some housing program. We operate thirty six rental properties. We've got some rental properties here in Bolivar that we operate for low and moderate income families. We operate Head Start program that's got four hundred and twenty five children in it, twenty six classrooms. We have a Head Start center here in Bolivar. We operate a public transportation system. That's true public transportation for anybody that wants to ride. We do about six hundred trips per day and all those trips are dispatched out of the central office in Henderson and we go from Nashville to Memphis daily to Jackson to wherever anybody needs to go, public transportation. And it depends on your ability to pay. Some people that are on ten care, about fifty percent of our trips are paid by ten care. Some of them are private pay, but it's a reduced fee and it's very, uh, good transportation, safe and reliable transportation as well. We do senior services. We operate a foster grandparent program, which is a mentoring program that, for senior adults that want to be mentors for school-aged children. They can work in our Head Start schools and mentor those children. We operate a meals on wheels program where we provide, uh, meals daily for seniors that might be in a congress side at a senior center or we may deliver those to their home. So we do about, uh, twelve hundred meals daily, going into all eight counties in Southwest Tennessee plus Fayette, Lauderdale, and Tipton County as well. Uh, we do a homemaker program that allows us to go in people's homes and do light housekeeping work and run errands for them, spend some time with them if they're shut in, and the purpose of that program is to allow people to stay at home and not be put in a nursing home. So it's very, a good program for elderly folks to take advantage of as well. We do a nutrition program through our central kitchen that's operated out of Henderson. Last year, we prepared and delivered almost eight hundred thousand meals out of that kitchen for the summer food program that's available to any school-aged child during the summer months. Uh, we can deliver those meals free of charge to your location, whether it's a vacation Bible school or any kind of summer program. We also operate an after-school at-risk program that's a free lunch for children in an after-school program. If it's a football team, it's a basketball team, we can provide a meal for them in the afternoon. So if you know of anybody that needs that, let us know. We also prepare the Head Start meals there at the central kitchen and the senior meals, so a very busy and active place. We operate, uh, some financial management services for senior, or for social security recipients and veterans that are not able to manage their own money. We'll manage their money for them, pay their bills for them, make sure that they have money left at the end of the month, and, uh, that program works very well. We operate a misdemeanor probation program in Henry County where we actually, uh, work with those people that have been sentenced to probation to help them, connect them to the services that are available and try to help them stay out of jail. So that's a lot of what we do. Probably have skipped something, but, uh, anybody have any questions?
Sound good. Sound real good.
We, we have a lot of people, about a hundred and sixty thousand people last year, so we, uh, are very busy. But we're very interested in your building here. Our lease on our current building will expire in June thirtieth of twenty three. So the mayor, uh, thinks that he can get that building ready if, uh, y'all agree. We can house our community service folks in that building, which would be two or three people. We'll have transportation services out of that building as well as, as some senior service programs as well, so. Any questions?
What did that cost? What's the cost on all that?
Cost on what?
Uh, just all that work through the program?
Our annual operating budget's about forty three million dollars. Is that what you're asking?
Well, I was asking how they afforded, so they afforded how they secure, social security or whatever stuff like that.
The social security program?
Yeah.
It costs, uh, forty dollars per month per client. That's how we get paid to manage their money.
Oh, that's, that's good.
Yeah, it's very reasonable. Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm excited. I'm sorry, did.
I was just gonna ask, is that a referral, um, for you all to contact these people? How's that work?
It works a couple of different ways. Most of the referrals come from the Social Security Administration because they know, and then we work closely with the VA to, to get clients a, as well that, that they have, that they know, uh, yeah. Yeah.
So I, um, I'm excited that they were interested in coming to the facility. We, um, uh, we have already a, a lot of the money to start the remodel, um, so I'm gonna come probably try to get with Mr. Watson and put together a bid packet to put that out to bid and see if we can go ahead and get started on the remodel part of it. Um, I committed to them to have it ready by July, so I guess we gotta figure out how we're gonna get it done, so, uh.
So you would just move your staff to that, instead of the office on Tennessee Street, to move to the office that we're gonna use for?
Yeah, that's correct.
And he even said they'll pay a little rent. He even asked for it for free, so.
Yeah, we're willing to pay some rent. Our, our programs allow for us, so that's part of the cost.
But to have a, have an entity like Southwest there at our, our location, that will, he's, you know, he's already said that he could offer his staff to have it. They'll be there to have it open. Um, that's, that's gonna be real big that we'll have them there. Yeah, we'll have them there and like I said, it's just been a blessing that it's all coming together, so, um, my, I wanted him to, he's sent me an email saying that he would commit, but I want him to just come and let you guys know, hear from him if y'all had any questions, so. Um, I'm looking forward to the partnership and excited to have, have you guys there, so there's the cornerstone entity in the neighborhood building and we're just, I think it's moving along well and it's gonna be a great thing for the community. All, all the resources starting to just come together as a whole, so. Um, we'll, what we'll do, I'll, like I said, give Mr. Watson, we'll try to put out some bid paperwork projects that we can, uh, get it, get it going, but it's not gonna take much out there at all to get that, that building up and ready, um, and have it ready to open up first of July and get ready for them moving in and making it work, so. Any other questions for Mr. Watson? Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
All right, uh, moving on to, uh, new business approvals, open bank account for LGI, well, local government investment pool funds. These are the funds that, if y'all remember the monies that we set aside to purchase the land and infrastructure for the new industrial park on sixty four. We, we need an account to, uh, we need to get an approval to open up a new account, uh, so we'll just, uh, listen and care about to get with all the local, uh, banks and see, I mean, it won't be like an interest bank account, just a basic second account to go ahead and get started on that, so. Any questions on that? Is there a motion to approve, open up a bank account for LG, LGIP funds? Motion by Mr. Crawford is their second. Second by Mr. Woods, if you would cash your votes.
Larry, get somebody to point it at him.
Yeah.
There you go.
Had a little problem with that. Motion carried next to the approval of resolution twenty two ten, authorizing the city to apply for site development grant. What this is, is that's a resolution asking for permission to apply for that grant. What we're looking at doing is working with the, uh, county on doing due diligence studies for the, uh, county industrial park. So we'll be, we'll, we will be the applicant and I, uh, I thought Mr. Todd was there, I guess he left. We have been discussing how we can work together on that, the, that park and help promote it. It's a county park, but it is in the city limits of Bolivar, so in the event that we market that, we could, you know, we'll be involved in, in the, uh, industrial recruitment out there, so this is what, what this is, and we will, it will be a match and it, I think it was right at five thousand, and that will come from the, uh, industrial board if we, if we get the grant. We will probably do a split between the city and I'll reach out to the county industrial park, but that's, that's what this resolution is for. Any questions? Was there a motion to approve resolution twenty, twenty two ten? Motion by Ms. Spinks.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ray, cash your vote.
Got a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm chairman of industrial board for the county. Do I need to vote or not vote?
No, you can. Motion carried. Anybody on communities to vote? All right, before we adjourn. All right, before we adjourn, I wanna, uh, take this opportunity, we apply, we had a open position, uh, opening for community development and, uh, tourism to come open, and we had one of our own council members here to apply, I thought he was playing, but he was actually serious and offered him the job, so Mr. Hill will be taking that position as our community development tourism director, uh, starting next two weeks, so. This'll be officially his last meeting, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to him if he wanna give us a going-away speech or that's your opportunity, I guess you won't be leaving, you'll be sitting down there instead of.
Yeah, yeah, uh, I just wanna thank, uh, city of Bolivar, the, the residents of the city of Bolivar, the voters for putting confidence in me and, and putting me here. All my life, all I've wanna do is help my community, and I know that sounds cliche, but that's really all I've tried to do and, uh, this has been a great opportunity, but I see, uh, even greater responsibility moving forward and, um, I'm excited about the opportunity, so. Thank you, mayor, for trusting me with that, and, uh, thank you, council, for being fun to work with over these last two years.
We'll see how it's gonna be when he down there on that side of the microphone. Sorry, now you go out there and ask all these questions, Larry, I'm gonna win by question. He gonna know y'all, how y'all feel, huh?
I'm gonna start tonight, working my question snap.
You gotta give me a little bit, I don't even know what I'm doing, a little bit, he ain't told me nothing.
So we, uh, what we'll do is, he'll, we will, he'll have a, uh, official resignation or whatever, but we will have a position open, so if there's not any opposition to this, what we, what I would like to do is go ahead and advertise that we have an opening available on the council, accepting resumes uh, for, uh, until, up until the end of October or whatever week before the council meeting and get those resumes to y'all. Um, I, I know what we usually do is try to have a family member, in the past, we've asked any of the family members to, uh, if they wanted to fill that term of their, their spouse, I'm guessing his spouse, so, um, but I know he talked to his dad, Mr. Hill, about, um, filling out his term, but legally, we have to open it up and go through that process and go through the resumes and all that stuff, so. If there's not any opposition, then I would like to go ahead and see if we could have those resumes turned in and fill his vacant position at the next council meeting. Everybody okay with it? Okay, well, that's all I have, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Mr. McKenna, second by Mr. Woods, all the favors say a.
All right.